Okay, everyone, if you can please take your seats, we're gonna begin. Mauricio?
Okay. Commissioner Sivacian. Commissioner Joseph. Commissioner Viskar. Vice Mayor Lama.
Here.
Mayor Spetchen.
Here. Great, thank you. We're gonna make a slight change to the order of the special presentations. We're gonna start with 2E. Yeah, we're gonna do 2E first.
So 2E is the Police Recognition Award to Teresa Becerra for Autism Awareness Training.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Good afternoon, everybody. April was Autism Awareness Month, and it's a great honor that we recognize the remarkable contributions of Teresa Becerra, who is here. I'd like to call her up, please, and her son, Robert. So Teresa, alongside her son, Robert, they graciously devoted their time to provide our officers in Ocean Rescue with invaluable autism awareness training. Their dedication has profoundly influenced how we serve and engage with members of our community living with autism spectrum disorder. I would like to also thank Commissioner Jerry Joseph and his wife, Jody Joseph, for facilitating our introduction to Teresa. Your support has been instrumental, and additionally, I extend my heartfelt appreciation to all our elected officials for their unwavering commitment to fostering inclusivity within our city. Lastly, let's not forget the importance of the City of Sunny Isles Beach PD's Autism Outreach Program. This initiative equips our officers to effectively and appropriately respond to a situation involving individuals living with ASD. Let's continue to work together and build a community where everyone feels seen, understood, and respected. Thank you. So, Robert, I would like to...
This is for Robert, and I did pardon.
And Teresa?
Let's go down, take picture.
The next item that we have on our agenda is the legislative update by Senator Pizzo.
Can I bring Robert with me when I go to places so I get clout? Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Of the 20 cities and 565,000 people I represent, it's really cool only to be able to go seven blocks to come here to here, as I am a resident. Jason Pizzo, 330 Sunny Isles Boulevard, Sunny Isles, Florida. Rabbi, good to see you. So I'm willing to take rapid-fire questions from everybody. You know that we have roughly 2,000 bills that are filed. Thank you, buddy. Thanks, bud. Roughly 2,000 bills that are filed, a little over 190 to 200 that actually pass. This session has been a little interesting because some bills have been presented to the governor that he has not signed yet, and a number that have not been presented. I know you probably all have some similar concerns or issues. I will start with SB 280, which is the Short-Term Rental Bill. We laid a pretty adequate record, I think, on the floor. Some of you may have seen, I called out that the House Speaker had an exception just for his county of Flagler only, and that it would apply for everywhere else. I thought that was rather disparate, so I expect that to be vetoed by the governor. 267 is the expediting of building permits. There's a whole criteria and tier, units up to 7,500 feet, 25,000 feet, and so on and so forth. Most applicable, I think, to Sunny Isles will be 50 units or less, or 50 units or more on the 60 days. That has also been presented to the governor. That was on May 7th. That bill has not been signed yet. If it is signed and put into law, I also laid a pretty extensive record about the applicability of these permits. These are meant for large tract homes, single-family detached developments. They are not meant for high rises. I was overly, overly clear on that point on the Senate floor, as well as in committee, that that passed. One bill, one of mine that passed this year, I know Eddie will be, Chief will be happy about it because I keep calling him about ATVs and racing and cars going through here. Passed the street racing and street takeover bill. It allows law enforcement, whereas before they had to physically be present to be able to make an arrest. It's a misdemeanor presence requirement. We've now heightened and hiked all of the violations and enhancements on criminal penalties, as well as monetary penalties as well. My kids are not terribly happy about it because they like to drive cars fast and do car meets, but we're losing kids and people are getting killed with the street takeovers especially. Couple of things, there's a number of issues that will be on the ballot. We have the opportunity with a super with a supermajority vote to place items on the ballot for this November. One of them is gonna be an increase from $50,000 to $75,000 for your homestead exemption. So if that receives 60% or more of the vote, so please, everybody should be voting for that to get an increased exemption on homestead, which originated in 1978 and then a few years after. So, and then following that, if it passes successfully each year, there'll be an escalator for inflation that attaches to that. There were a number of bad bills for our cities that did not pass, happy to say. I think Mayor is well aware that my job a lot and the greatest utility I have sometimes is just to expose and kill bad bills that would affect. This year, I was awarded Defender of Home Rule by the Florida League of Cities. So out of 160 legislators, I guess I'm pissing somebody off. A number of components to the condo bill. Now, ad nauseam, you guys have seen that I do town halls all over the place. We just did Port St. Lucie last week. We'll be doing another in Pompano Beach, and we have another one coming up in August in Aventura. The condo bill, which you'll hear a lot from your residents, is a bill I filed five years ago. So I apologize for the timing of it. It just took 98 souls lost in my district for people to start paying attention. But these are things that I filed over five years ago. There will be increased education requirements for associations. The general idea is for everybody to have a nice quality of life. This is the sort of ethos of it. Not to have to be adversarial with one another, to make the production of records just like they are for your credit cards, your mortgage payments, and for cities that they do already. And so they think it's tough love, and we've gotten a lot of pushback, but it was necessary because for too long deferred maintenance was occurring for an entire generation in a lot of buildings. Luckily, we don't have a lot of those issues close by, but there are, you know, I have 20 cities, 565,000 constituents, 66% of my district are condos. If you hear anything about condos that comes out of somebody's mouth, just tell them to call me. We are the most accessible office as rates that any of these constitute issues, so please do so. I am the only one of 40 senators in Tallahassee that lives in a condo, here in Sunny Isles. So I go through the exact same thing, and I'm not asking anyone or anyone's family to do that, which I'm not imposing upon my own. Couple other issues, we may have a special session this October. Insurance, depending on who you're listening to, seems to be stabilizing, but the discounts that we were all sort of promised by other certain bills and measures have really not taken effect. We'll be looking to increase the stress test and the capital requirements for insurance companies, and to be able to actually put mitigation credits towards a number of insurance policies. I know that my constituents, just like I do, have suffered nearly 300% increases in property insurance rates for underlying buildings, as well as discovering that by some clerical error, your state senator was the highest-paying Citizens condo premium payer in the state of Florida. The maximum allowable rate was X, and I was paying $9,000 over that. My biggest concern, and I brought the CEO of Citizens to Sunny Isles and explained to them that they can correct the problem on my property, but I don't know how many thousands of my constituents have also sort of been overcharged. So some people should be expecting rebates. We also successfully last year removed the flood insurance requirement. Flood insurance is not a pipe bursting or a shower pan leaking to the unit below. Flood insurance is for groundwater that raises up. So imagine my disgust when that passed originally, when some of us live on the 26th, 27th, or 15th floor. We need an arc if we have a flood at that high. The governor has also not signed the budget yet, but for Sunny Isles, we were asked to seek funding for the Sunny Isles Beach Park Seawall Reconstruction Replacement for $750,000, and we were able to get that fully funded. Of course, you know, that's always subject to whatever goes under the veto pen. Go on and on. One other good thing for those watching, you can write this down and obviously contact our office if you don't have the opportunity. The My Safe Florida Home Program, which has traditionally only been for single-family detached homes for wind mitigation, inspection, and hardening, is now available, is going to be available beginning July 1st for condominiums. It's a very big deal. It's up to $175,000 per association, up to $1,500 per unit, and it's msflh.com/condos. I just want every condo association to get on that list. We need to be able to have that money committed so we can re-up it next year or get an increase. But I'm happy to take any questions. Of course, a couple hundred bills, but those are the things that are most relevant here.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Could you repeat that website, please?
Ms... flh.com forward slash condos, plural.
Okay.
And then if you're doing it on your phone, do another forward slash at the end.
Okay.
But it's My Safe Florida Home for condos. It's a pilot program that's starting this year. Several million dollars set aside to give up to $175,000 per condo.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Huge.
Yeah.
So, hi, Chris. So I was wondering, has anyone thought about the fact that there are many automobile insurers that also sell home insurance in Florida? They make money on our state for auto insurance, but they refuse to sell home insurance. Is there anything the state can do to require them to sell home insurance?
So, Commish, I've said on CBS, ABC, NBC, national print, I think it's a little nauseating sometimes when you're watching a sporting event on the weekend, and intermittently you get commercials about bundle and save. In Florida, South Florida specifically, seems to be the only place where you can't do that. And then when I raise the issue as to, well, if they're having the privilege of doing business in the state of Florida, why aren't we gonna have any requirement? It's quixotic to me that I have several cars between two buildings on 163rd Street that are parked on the second and third floor that one company will insure, but they will not insure my condo, which is 19 and 26 floors up.
Right.
It really doesn't make any sense to me. But the problem lies in the fact that those large companies have a certain criteria and best practice, the way they do business. The State Farms, the All States, the Progressives, those companies, they cannot and will not compete with entities that I can start up with someone here in the member of the audience for $15 million, which is rather de minimis amount of capital for the exposure you're gonna be assuming, go ahead and issue premiums and policies to people, and then have three years of no storms, distribute all of that income as distributions, you know, capital distributions to the partners, and then leave nothing in the LLC. So when the storm does hit, you claim insolvency and then ask FICA, which is the state program, to basically to bail you out. And that's basically what happened. All of these companies that you see that have gone out had seven to 10 years of absolutely no payments out whatsoever, but then they basically get to claim insolvency in the LLC at the end. Those companies using best practices will simply not compete. So that's why we want to increase the stress test and the capital requirements for companies. We want to tap into some of the cat fund. We have $12.7 billion in catastrophic fund available. We should bring that down when insurers are claiming that their largest expense is reinsurance. And basically, this is what that means. Any one of these condos here along Collins Avenue, they're gonna have an insurance policy that has a deductible. That deductible to get Fannie and Freddie approval for those mortgages really cannot exceed 5%. Goldman Sachs last week came out and said they'll go up to 10% on a deductible. But really, you have your deductible, then you have that first portion of loss, and then you have a whole basket inside of that building that it may appraise for, which is required under Florida Statute 718 to get an appraisal, and the insurance company is gonna give an appraisal of that building to which you have to be completely insured for. Practically speaking, you're never gonna be tapping the upper levels of that amount. You could have storm surge of 50 feet. It's not gonna go above the sixth floor of any one of these buildings. You could have wind-driven rain damage to 10 units on three floors. It's never gonna be tapping that upper level. And yet that upper level that we're never hitting is proving or demonstrating to be some of the most expensive insurance to place. And I think that we could use some compression and some allowable funds and resources to be able to do away with that.
Thanks.
Hey, what else?
Question. Thank you for coming. Is there a certain deadline by which the governor has to either sign or not sign, or can bills just?
That one will be May 22nd, next Wednesday. Yeah, May 22nd.
Did you want to talk a little bit about the DBPR, where you were able to do that?
Sure. So I, candidly, it's the worst-kept secret in Tallahassee, think the DBPR is useless. I think they're absolutely useless. They are. However, this year, in an attempt to go along with the condo bill for the added authority that we're giving that agency and for the accountability that we're hoping to get from our buildings and associations, we've allocated and appropriated $6.1 million this year, with an extra $1.3 million this year, but $6.1 million every year recurring to add 65 new DBPR people. Now, the Department of Business Professional Regulation is the same agency in the state that regulates the nail salon down the street, your building official, structural engineer, and everybody else in between. And I think that the 800 numbers should be more dedicated to the 1.6 million condos that we have in Florida. To that end, you should expect a greater presence from DBPR, but I have cautiously optimistic, but I've made it very clear. I'm the incoming Senate Minority Leader in the Florida Senate, and the incoming Senate President and I are both of the same opinion that if they don't perform this year, that they're gonna be dismantled.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. Thank you for the report and for coming here all this way. Is there anything that is coming up to alleviate some of the assessments that the, I'll say elderly, but it's more than the elderly, you know? I know that there's some county resources, but is there something from the state that can be expected?
So a couple of things. I proposed a bill three years ago. A lot of you know that I'll file a bill, and one or two years later, somebody else puts their name on it and passes the same bill. This session was the 23rd time. It's hyperpolarization in Tallahassee, just like Washington. It is what it is, but it's fine. I don't have pride of authorship. What bothers me is when I file a bill that will save someone's life, like Narcan for high schools took three years, even balloon releasing last year. One of the things I proposed a few years ago that you will see this session with somebody else's name on it is I think that associations should be able to conservatively invest their reserves. We're asking for millions, and just this stretch alone of where we live, tens of millions of dollars to be put away that can't be touched, gets no return, and it's not usable. So I want to allow for lines of credit to be used to fully fund these reserves as an allowance. Also, to be able to, as I said, conservatively invest these reserves. Also, I hear, just like you do, about the octogenarian who's widowed, living on a fixed income, who can't afford any kind of assessment. There's two things I would say to that quickly. For the most part, there's a few anomalies of really well-run buildings in every city, but for the most part artificially suppressed association fees for a generation have left incredible deferred maintenance. And while you enjoy the benefits of having the amenities of a pool you wouldn't have in a single-family home, parking, valet, all of these little buttons, you did so without the burden. And so association fees on a whole for the last nine years did not even track CPI, much less inflation. The cost of labor and materials did not. And yes, we find ourselves in a perfect storm where interest rates are three times what they were when I first filed the bill, that labor and materials are two and a half times what they were, but we are where we are. And I think you know, Mayor, that I will just not allow things to go at the risk and the safety of people's well-being. Having said that, there are plenty of financial institutions that will now lend. That same 80-year-old widow that we're talking about on a fixed income, 99% of the time also has 100% equity in their unit. So while they may not have on a fixed income or social security check, the income to show to satisfy a loan instrument, they certainly have the equity, and there's plenty of banks that are now willing to loan based on the pledging of the association fees or the equity in that unit. And here's effectively how it happens. This is like what I want to do with septic tanks in cities that have it, not yours. But effectively, it's something, it's basically a lien or a loan that's not called, and it's not accelerated until there's a transaction. The unit sells, or, you know, it's devised because someone's deceased. And that's for the health of the building, and I think that's, you know, really plausible. There are a lot of people, there's another building in North Miami, it's on the cover of a newspaper today, where's 500 units, and people are complaining that, you know, all of a sudden they have an assessment. The reporter was right to remark that it's been 50 years since they collected reserves. Folks, I'm sorry, but everything else has gone up in price. And to remain popular, a lot of associations artificially suppress those association fees to get reelected. And they did so really at the expense of your safety, and we just can't have that again. So there's a lot of equity in those places that don't have the income.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Sure, George.
Now, since you were speaking about allowing condos to invest their reserves, I hope that there is a lot of, you know, there's going to be something in the statute as far as eyeballs on the condo boards, make sure that they're not starting out a bank themselves and then investing in their own.
Yeah, my proposal called for a certified financial advisor, a dispassionate third party, no connection. There are a lot of new controls and regulations that are also in the condo bill about disclosure. We had a leak in our building the other day, and I found out afterwards that the management company also owns the water restoration company. Although all those things are gonna have to be disclosed in those relationships that have not been to date. Those things are not considered, they're certainly unethical, but they're not considered illegal. Neither kickbacks, bribes, or any of that stuff right now. So, yeah, of course. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Before we continue, I want to recognize some people in the audience. We have the Mayor of Miami-Dade County, Daniela Vivintava. Thank you so much for being here. We have Representative Fabian Basabie in the back. From Commissioner Steinberg's office, we have Alexis all in the back. And I thought I saw former Mayor Shlomo Danzinger. Oh, there you are from Surfside. Thank you.
So the next item that we're gonna take out of order, Mayor, is to age the proclamation presented for Jewish Solidarity Day.
Thank you.
So for Jewish Solidarity Day, it was my idea to have all of our rabbis come together, where I've tried for so long to have that happen, and this seemed like on Jewish Heritage Month, to have that occur. And after today, I would like to proclaim that May 16th of each year would be Jewish Heritage Day, Jewish Solidarity Day in Sunny Isles Beach. Thank you. And we have with us Mayor Kava that would like to say a few words.
Good afternoon. What a pleasure to be back before you. I was here for Women's History Month and was so grateful for the honor you bestowed upon me at that time, and thank you for being leaders once again on the subject of Jewish heritage and for the idea, Commissioner Joseph, for bringing the rabbis together and declaring unity in these times in which we so much need unity. So I'm very grateful to be standing before you as Mayor of Miami-Dade County, your first Jewish mayor, your first woman mayor, and really, again, a great, great, great day. Sunny Isles Beach is making a mark. So thank you to all of you. It is a very difficult time in the world, and certainly it's a difficult time for Israel. So I think that calling everybody together in this time of division to say we stand in unity is very important. It's important for us to feel that unity, and it's important for our larger community in the world to see that we are unified. I was going to thank Senator Pizzo, but he's now gone, so I'll thank him in absentia for his legislative update. Obviously, he's working hard on behalf of our region and our state. And the partnership with our state government is also very, very critical during this time, and I'm grateful for Florida for standing up to make sure that everyone feels safe and welcome and unified. So I'm so happy to be here with the rabbis from the area that were invited for this special recognition day as well. They have led their congregations with great courage and passion during this difficult time, always helping others, always reaching out, and with a deep sense of chesed. So thank you, rabbis. So I guess this is the first annual
Right.
Jewish Unity Day here. Solidarity, Solidarity Day. Okay. And I also wanted to congratulate Teresa Becerra, if she's still here, from Autism First, and her son, Robert.
That sounds so good. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And for all of the first responders and officers that are here in recognition. And I want to call, shout out to Rajadala, our chief of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue and his great team. And of course, he distinguished himself at Surfside and the collapse of the Champlain Towers. And just to emphasize the solidarity, of course, he's a Palestinian-American, and we're proud of his heritage as well. So Autism Awareness Month was last month, but advocacy is critical year-round. So again, focusing on autistic and neurodivergent individuals to make sure that they are safe is something that we also focus on in Miami-Dade County and our Commissioner Raquel Regalado, and also our chairman, who both have family members who are neurodivergent and have really stepped up. So congratulations to everybody who's being recognized today in the great city of Sunny Isles Beach, and for recognizing the strength and resilience of the Jewish people, who, for example, my family that escaped Europe, Russia, Poland, Lithuania during the pogroms, and my husband's family that escaped Italy during the Holocaust, and so many others, and so many who come to this country seeking freedom and a new and better life. And of course, we're here to accept them and welcome them with open arms. So we know the Jewish story particularly is one of survival, of strength, of resilience, and we are home to a very strong and proud Jewish community. And we stand unified in the protection of all people and to protect our Jewish community during this difficult time. Unfortunately, antisemitism is alive and well, and so I think this message is really critical because we don't want to be driven apart. We want to be unified. And so for today, which is a great symbol, I'm honored to join you to thank you for making this recognition.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Can we get a picture? Oh, yeah, picture. Thank you.
I want to have the opportunity as well to, on May 6th, the White House make a proclamation on Days of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust. So I want to read a small portion of that. During Yom HaChorah, in this Day of Remembrance, we mourn the 6 million Jews who were systematically targeted and murdered in the Holocaust, one of the darkest chapters in human history. We also mourn the Roma, Sinti, Slav, people with disabilities, LGBTQ+ people, racial minorities, and political dissidents who were killed or endured abuse by the Nazis and their collaborators, as well as those who risked or lost their life to protect others. We honor the memories of the victims, the courage of the survivors, and the heroism of those who stood up to the Nazis, and we recommend ourselves... And we recommend ourselves to making real the promise of never again. Entire families were wiped out, communities destroyed, survivors left with memories and traumas that will never go away. Silence is complicity. This has never been more important than in the aftermath of Hamas vicious terrorist attack on October seventh. The deadliest data for Jews since the Holocaust. Among the twelve hundred innocent people who were slaughtered and the hundreds taken hostages were elderly survivors of the Choi who were forced to relieve the horrors they thought they had escaped decades ago. While Jews across the country and around the world are still coping with the trauma of that day and its aftermath, we have seen alarming surge in antisemitism at home and abroad that resurfaced painful scars of millennia of antisemitism and hate against the Jewish people. These include harassment and calls for violence against Jews in our schools, in our communities and online. This antisemitism is reprehensible and dangerous. Antisemitic hate speech has absolute no place on college campuses or anywhere else in the country. As Americans, we cannot stay silent as Jews are attacked, harassed and targeted. We must also forcefully push back against attempts to ignore, deny, distort or revise the history of Nazi atrocities during the Holocaust or Hamas murders and other atrocities committed on October seventh. During these days of remembrance, we mourn the life tragically stolen in the Choi on October seventh. As we hold the Jewish community close to our hearts, we recommend to remembering so that that happened can never be erased. In silence, wounds deepen, but in remembrance comes healing, justice and repair. Toward those aims, we must all forcefully act against antisemitisms in all forms of hate fueled violence. As we do, we honor the courage, strength and resilience of the Jewish people who have inspired the world for generations by turning pain into purpose, healing into hope and darkness into light.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's try to come so big here. Rabbis? He won a positive proclamation. Does it have your names on it? I don't know. It tends to be visual names, maybe not.
So at this time, I would like to ask each rabbi to say a few words.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, Mayor Kaba, it's an honor to be here, stand here today in front of you. I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you to our city, to the leadership of our city and to our law enforcement who every day work and strive to make our city as safe and a vibrant community that it is. In a story of Purim, which is another Holocaust attempt that happened maybe a little bit longer than some eighty years ago, there are words in the Scroll of Esther where Mordechai was the spiritual leader of the Jewish people at the time, comes to Queen Esther, who is married to Achash Barosh, the Persian despot, who signs in law the annihilation of Jewish people. And Mordechai tells his niece Esther that it's your time to act. She is hesitant and reluctant initially. I haven't been called to the king in more than thirty days. I have been fasting. I'm not looking my best, I'm not feeling my best. And she's reluctant. And Mordechai tells her the famous words that maybe this is the purpose of why you became the queen. And for this very moment, this is the meaning and purpose of your whole life, why you are in a position of leadership that you are currently in. So I want to again, thank you, but at the same time, I want to encourage and implore our leaders in our city and beyond. You know the famous words that for evil to triumph, all it takes is for few good men to be silent. So we can never do enough and we can never speak enough against hatred, against bigotry, against persecution and against marginalization. And again, thank you for doing whatever you can do to make our community a stronger and a safer place for all of us. But also may this message resonate with everyone that we can never stop and we need to not just repeat it again, but we need to do, to do more to make and to continue to making our communities and our state safer place where everybody feels safe and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Rabbi Haber?
Rabbi Haber? My dear colleagues, on behalf of my synagogue and I think I'm talking behalf of all Jewish organizations, Jewish communities in the city, I wish to warmly thank the officials of the city of Sunny Isles Beach for organizing this special event. You do honor to the Jewish residents and friends of the special place that we call home. Your dedicated and sincere assistance and friendship towards the community is deeply appreciated. I have just returned from Israel several hours ago after a twelve-day trip. During that time, many, maybe to your surprise, heard about the city of Sunny Isles Beach and their support to Israel and to Jewish cause. Your friendship has always been the hallmark of our city and now more than ever, during these troubled times and challenging times, your active commitment has shown how devoted you really are by the flags, by the Israeli flags going up certain places of the city and by also your day-to-day commitment to all causes, especially the security of our synagogues, of our house of worships. Your concern to our safety and well-being are felt by one and all. In addition, I would like to thank the Sunny Isles Police Department for all they do from the chief of police. To each and every officer, our trust in your professional concerns shines through and we want you to know that it is heartfelt by one and all. The strong bonds of brotherhood and mutual respect in our city serves as a model for how true liberty and justice for all is what America has always been about. Many cities and colleges, campuses throughout our country can look upon the dedication of your efforts as a model to follow. I'm humbled to be here in front of you and in front of all of the wonderful people representing my members, my friends and all the Jewish community. And Bezot HaShem, as we say, we ask Almighty for peace to prevail at home and abroad. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rabbi Amar?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for this incredible opportunity to be united. Unity is always something that strengthens us. If you look at all the rabbis which are present, it's thanks to one man who had a vision, who came and became to Lubabitch Rebe in nineteen fifty-one. In nineteen fifty-one, he looked at the world and he said, it's true, the world might look like a jungle, but really it's a garden. When can a jungle become a garden? When we are invested to making it better. I want to say that all the Jewish institutions of this city have been instituted at the same time I see here, nineteen ninety-seven. And at the same time as the city emerged as an official city, all the Jewish communities started popping up and serving the needs. It became such an incredible place that people from all over the world want to come to Sunny Isles. You've really made a city which is extraordinary, beautiful. You've invested yourself, you've made a jungle into a garden. Now it is our responsibility to educate our children in a generation where unfortunately, everybody lives in their cell phones, in their imaginary virtual reality. It is our responsibility as leaders and as leaders, commissioners, mayor, officials to try to bring a spirit of education where we are going to lead our children to a better world. So I would like on this day, in the spirit of the Lubabitch Rebe, to encourage you to do the same as what all the rabbis which are here, which all have been inspired by the Lubabitch Rebe, to start special educational programs, whether it's a minute of silence in the school, I don't know if that already exists, where a child will be able to take the time to contemplate on why he is in the world and what he can do to make this world a better place. Or whether it's just educational programs where you have mentors which will be walking in the streets and maybe gathering our children to put them in the right path. And with this, I would like to thank you, Mayor Thetchin. I'd like to thank all the commissioners, my member synagogue commissioner Jerry Joseph and the police officers and everyone that works tirelessly to be able to make the city a beautiful one. Your beautiful people made together with this day of unity, we should go to the ultimate unity with Mashiach now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rabbi Ben Shul?
Thank you so much. Mayor Larisa Thetchin, commissioners, esteemed rabbis, community members and its kindish guests, it's an honor to stand before you representing the Beit Ramban congregation as we celebrate unity, resilience and the enduring spirit of our Jewish community. Sunny Isles Beach is a vibrant mosaic of cultures, traditions and values. Today, we honor the rich eriches and contributions of our Jewish residents who have shown unwary strength and compassion through joy and adversity. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to Mayor Larisa and to the vice mayor and to all the commissioners for designating and supporting this day as Jewish Solidarity Day. Recognition means the world to us and reflects the inclusive environment of Sunny Isles Beach. As we gather, we are mindful of the ongoing war in Israel and the challenges faced by our brothers and sisters there. We hope and pray to God for the safe liberation of all the hostages and for peace over violence, peace in Israel and peace in all the world. Today, we remember the lessons of our Torah and importance of unity. We reaffirm our commitment for fostering our supportive environment where everyone feels valued and respected. Our solidarity reflects our shared values of justice, tolerance and mutual respect. Let us use this day to deepen our connections and strengthen our bonds. Together, we can build a brighter future rather in understanding and cooperation. Thank you for being here and for continuous support in making Sunny Isles Beach a beacon of harmony and community spirit. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Rabbi Baron, please.
Good afternoon, dear colleagues, dear commission. Wonderful to see everyone over here this afternoon. It's always not easy to speak after all my beautiful colleagues and then after the mayor. But what I want to point out is that this is something unique and this is something new. And it's never been done before. It's really a sign of the times, the times that we live in, that we need to proclaim solidarity to the Jewish people. We never had to do this before. Unfortunately, there are many people who do not and in fact are enemies of the Jewish people and proclaim it openly in the streets. We have freedom of speech over here, of course, but we have the obligation to speak out. And when we're quiet, we're complicit. So I commend the city of Sunny Isles Beach, our mayor, our beautiful commissioners and of course, the city staff who work tirelessly for the benefit of everybody within the community. We really appreciate that. And of course, the police force definitely, they do way beyond and to make us feel secure and safe over here. So thank you very much to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Rabbi Algrushen?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you very much. It would help for you to speak, for me to even holler. This morning, I was giving my daily class. A lot of Noah, we start to speak with the congregants and we all come to the same, we all agree and came to the same conclusion that in Sunny Isles, it's safe, it's comfortable to be Jewish. We're not afraid to walk in the street with our black hat or with the kippah when it's a little bit hotter. And in general, in Miami, it's very safe. And to be sitting in a synagogue, ten thirty in the morning, learning a bit with the congregant and they all came to the same conclusion. and they all came to the same conclusion. It's really beautiful. So today, as we are proclaiming that together, and I have the honor to speak in front of you, I wish that the entire world will be able to look at the beautiful and amazing work that you have done toward our community and this beautiful way where everybody is welcome, everybody is feeling safe and comfortable each other, will go and emerge toward the entire America and hopefully to the entire world. And this way, we'll be able to feel and to see days of peace for the entire universe. And thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I'm proud to be an overall resident of Sunny Isles Beach and to be a Jewish resident as well. And I thank you, everyone, for your attendance and the great speakers.
Thank you.
Before we go on to the next item, I'd be remiss not to also recognize the staff. They've done, the city manager and deputy manager have done a really great job in supporting Jewish Heritage Month, in lighting up the buildings blue on Israeli independence. It's very noticeable and those sort of things really matter. And I want to commend our local library. If you go on their website, they're doing things for Jewish Heritage Month. Rabbi Baron's wife did a Holocaust cover the other day. On Monday, there's going to be painting, reproducing a Jewish artist's painting. There's going to be a Holocaust survivor that's going to be coming on May 29th. That's going to be for the adults. She lives in our city. So there's a lot of things going on that our city is doing to support the Jewish population, and we're going to continue to do that no matter what. So thank you all.
I'd just like to say that the temperature has finally been regulated in the library. So if you like, if you would like to go there, you'd no longer have to bring a jacket.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to be Miami Dade Fire Department Annual Report by Fire Chief Tidal.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, to all of our appointed leaders, and of course, to the residents and distinguished guests of Sunny Isles Beach. My name is Ray Jadaala, Fire Chief of Miami Dade Fire Rescue. Before we begin, you know, today's service delivery report for 2023, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize a couple of members of my staff, members that who have assisted with putting the service delivery report together, and of course, to help run this lean mean green machine known as Miami Dade Fire Rescue's 3,000 members. My chief of staff, Erica Benitez. My assistant chief. My assistant chief for support services, Melanie Ibelito. My battalion chief who oversees the Sunny Isles District, Joel Gemenez. And Mr. Matt Macko, who oversees the division of planning for our department that also put this program together. So thank you to, you know, some of the members of my team. To kick off this presentation, I have a short video that highlights some of the incidents that we ran in the last couple of years, and of course, some of the services that we've provided the residents of Sunny Isles Beach. So I know that we may have a volume or an audible issue, so.
You're okay.
Okay. I was gonna sing while the video is going, but.
Please don't do that. Isn't that supposed to have audio?
Yeah, there was supposed to be sound, but it's okay. I really don't want to come or anything of that sort. So this is just some of the incidents we've ran in the last couple of years in Sunny Isles Beach, from structure fires to major incidents, gas calls, to of course, you know, several years ago, the gas explosion that occurred along Sunny Isles Beach. We've also ran numerous incidents along the coastal ways with our fireboat that is utilized to locate individuals that may be off the coast several miles. Our newly purchased air rescue in the last couple of years, we have four of those helicopters. And as you could see here, you know, some of the services to our community that we provide, which is going to be part of the presentation.
Okay.
So just an overview of Miami Dade Fire Rescue. So Miami Dade Fire Rescue is the sixth largest fire department in the country. We are the largest in the southeast, and we currently have 72 stations. We opened up our 72nd station last week. We have over 160 frontline units, two which are operating currently out of Sunny Isles Beach. And we have just over now 2,300 uniformed firefighters. And we have seven that are proudly serving Sunny Isles Beach seven days a week, 365 days a year. You know, as you could see additionally, we ran just under 300,000 calls for services throughout Miami Dade County. Of that, 4,100, just over 4,100 were ran in Sunny Isles Beach. Additionally, Miami Dade Fire Rescue is also an accredited agency. And Madam Mayor, you may have received a letter from my boss, Mayor Levine Kava, highlighting that Miami Dade Fire Rescue was able to achieve the touted the ISO Class 1. This is something that, you know, I can't even begin to explain the hard work that went into this. And it's very difficult for large departments to attain because of the rural areas. But in the last 18 months, when I tell you that, you know, we've implemented new procedures, apparatuses, equipment, training, which we came to October of 2023 where we were assessed, and we scored a very high score, giving us the ISO Class 1. To just highlight the, you know, the types of individuals that work for Miami Dade Fire Rescue, the ISO Class 1, along with the accreditation, out of the 38,000 fire departments in the country, only 123 fire departments actually have that distinction. And Miami Dade County is the only department with residents that we serve greater than 1 million with a geographical area that we serve over 1,000. So we're the only department of that sort. So again, it's just the hard work of the men and women from Miami Dade Fire Rescue and of course, you know, various departments throughout the county. So just again, not to underscore the amount of work, but I gotta say, you know, we just continue to provide those services that the residents demand. So in regards to resources for Sunny Isles Beach, as you know, we have, you know, Station 10, which operates out of Sunny Isles Beach. But just more importantly, as I had mentioned earlier, there are 72 fire stations that run out of Miami Dade County Fire Rescue. And as many of you may have seen, you know, the tragic, you know, events that happen at Surfside. And, you know, just by the snap of a finger, we had 80 fire rescue units just from Miami Dade Fire Rescue alone and an additional 40 units throughout Miami Dade County and Bryant County that came to assist. You know, the 11 stations that surround Sunny Isles Beach, the four and a half miles. And, you know, one of the misconceptions may be that it just takes, you know, one truck to put out a fire. As you, you know, as you are aware, it does take several trucks, especially the fact that when there's high rises that are involved. There is the search and rescue phase and the extinguishment phase, and of course, the mop-up. And a typical fire, as you may have seen in the video, usually generates a response of close to 20 units from Miami Dade Fire Rescue when everything is said and done, and a command team of 10 people to ensure that everything is mitigated. So it's, you know, you're not just, you know, supplied with one fire station. It's definitely 72 stations that could respond to Sunny Isles Beach at a drop of a dime. And, you know, we have 70 firefighters within the four and a half miles, as you could see. And of course, we are well below the response times throughout nationally with seven minutes and four seconds throughout Sunny Isles Beach. And of course, traffic continues to be a challenge. Building a safe and resilient Sunny Isles Beach, and as you could see, since 2018, the calls for service have increased by 30%. And this has been about the average. We average about 3% to 4% increase throughout Miami Dade County in regards to services. This, you know, is coupled with, you know, new residences, new residents moving in, new structures being built, and just the call for services that are needed. You know, also additionally, we just updated our fireboat. We have a state-of-the-art fireboat that's capable of conducting sonar, foam operations, can pump close to 6,000 gallons of water, especially for some of the high rises along the intercoastal where we can make connections to the fire pump to get water in the event that additional water is necessary. We are gonna place Rescue 63 in service. It's going to be placed partially between two stations, half-days, you know, as we build a station. But that Rescue 63 is one of the resources in the event that there is a large incident. We'll be responding here to Sunny Isles Beach. You know, continuing, as you can see, that Sunny Isles Beach is very dense in regards to the population. You know, we are looking at three new developments, if they have not been already completed, are looking to be completed in the next, you know, few years with 600 residential units. Last year, Miami Dade Fire Rescue inspected 573 businesses just in Sunny Isles Beach alone to ensure the life safety component is met for the residents, the visitors, and of course, you know, the city government. You know, one of the things, you know, it's not just about emergency calls that we respond to. As you saw that, you know, we responded to just over 4,000 calls in Sunny Isles Beach, but also the engagement that we have with Sunny Isles residents. Last year, Miami Dade Fire Rescue participated in five community events in Sunny Isles Beach and where we actually had contact with over 900 residents alone from fire and life safety events to teach those types of services. Last year, Miami Dade Fire Rescue also launched two brand-new programs. The Help Program, which I understand has been very receptive here in Sunny Isles Beach, and the Splash Program. The Help Program is a free program for all of Miami Dade County residents, business owners, and of course, you know, government officials. And I have to say that this program has been very beneficial. We've seen success stories across the media where people are being trained with, within two hours, hands-on CPR for adult, stroke recognition, stop the bleed, and additional first aid. And again, we've seen some successful stories along the local media in regards to residents who have been trained that actually stepped in and rendered aid to another resident or a visitor only to save their lives. So this program has already paid itself forward, a million times forward, especially when one person is saved. Second program that we've launched is our Splash Program. It's our water awareness and swim component. So what's different from our program is this program actually is all year long. Where typically, as you know, the programs are during the spring and summertime, and then they kind of taper off. We've partnered with faith-based organizations, private organizations, to ensure that we have commitments and areas where we could teach, you know, kids and adults if necessary, how to swim. Now, we're not creating the Michael Phelps of the world, but just enough that, God forbid, that there is a incident that could swim to the, you know, to the shore or to the edge of a pool. You know, additionally, Miami Dade Fire Rescue, you know, one of the things that makes what we look for is feedback to ensure that the highest possible care is given to our residents. And as you could see here, of their surveys that were sent out to the residents of Sunny Isles Beach, 22 Sunny Isles Beach residents submitted their surveys, giving us a rating of 4.92 out of 5, with a rating of 98% satisfaction rate. And you can see some of those comments that are below. These are taken directly off of the surveys. And these are specifically residents of Sunny Isles Beach. So just one of the ones, the team was amazing, polite, helpful, and very professional. It was a pleasure. So again, these are residents of Sunny Isles Beach that are actually, you know, commenting on the services that they are being provided. With that, Madam Mayor, I just want to again, thank you for the opportunity to provide the service delivery report for 2023. I do appreciate the invitation, you know, along with my staff. And at this time, I open up the floor for any questions.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick question, please. Thank you.
I have had feedback from residents regarding the, and I was told that this wasn't always the case regarding sirens after 10 o'clock in the evening.
Okay.
When the trucks leave the station. I was told that at some point, there had been an agreement that there would not be sirens and.
I'd have to look into it, but that's a very, that's very difficult considering the laws require the use of sirens anytime we enter into a roadway. And again, Commissioner, I'd have to do some research.
Is it possible to have the siren go at once, and then once you get into the roadway, to not have it at certain hours?
I'd give me an opportunity to do some research, and I would have to get back to you and then the city manager. So before I answer this.
The most regular complaint that I hear.
Yeah.
Sirens at night keeping residents away.
Yeah, I know that it's very difficult, especially with the roadways here are just so, you know, we just mentioned, you know, how densely populated, you know, Collins is.
And the coaching.
Yes, and the echo, you know, concept. So give me an opportunity to do some research, and let me get back to you and your team.
Anyone else? Commissioner Biskar? No?
Great. Thank you.
Do you want to go on, and then we'll take the picture? Okay. Commissioner Biskar is going to, and then we're gonna take the picture.
So I noticed you didn't mention your recent Class 1 rating.
Yes, ma'am.
So in recognition of that, we'd like to highlight that for everybody because you're being a little humble. So we have a certificate of achievement for you and your department. I'm really glad that your staff is here. I'd just like to read what it says. It's very brief. It says, "On behalf of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, this certificate is awarded in recognition of the outstanding achievement of the Miami Dade Fire Rescue, MDFR, in obtaining the Class 1 Public Protection Classification Rating from the Insurance Services Office. This prestigious distinction marks the first time in history that MDFR has achieved this highest possible rating. And on top of that, you're also setting a national precedent for departments serving areas over 1,000 square miles and populations exceeding 1 million. We're the first department this large to be able to achieve this, and that's commendable." This, the class, yeah, let's give them a hand.
Thanks.
The Class 1 ISO rating is a testament to MDFR's commitment to employing the most advanced and effective practices in emergency response and risk reduction. This achievement not only underscores the department's excellence in areas such as emergency communications, water supply systems, response coverage, fire suppression resources, and fire prevention programs, but also significantly benefits our communities through potential reductions in fire insurance premiums. So we get a possible insurance bond. So thank you for that.
Beginning July 1st.
Beginning July 1st, for residential, commercial, and industrial properties. So in summary, this is a big deal. Congratulations on this achievement, and thank you so much for your heart.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you so much, Commissioner. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Please, I'm feeling startled, like, come on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mauricio, before we go to the next item, um, I'd like to allow Representative Bassabi to come up and say a few words in tinsier. Very nice to, to see him here. Thank you for coming.
Good evening again, everyone. Fabian Bassabi, I'm your state representative. Um, first off, thank you for your partnership. Uh, you guys are definitely one of my easiest cities to work with and I really appreciate all of your accessibility and all your hard work. And those trips up to Tallahassee came in handy as you see how effective we can be as a united team. Um, a lot of people, they expect when I get here to just have a legislative update, but, um, I am going to wait until it's official. Uh, the governor has another almost ten days, possibly two weeks to sign off on some budget items and some legislation that is going to be game changer for the state. Um, we've noticed a lot of significant changes so far with the bills that have been coming through. I will comment on a couple of things that I walked in on, uh, from the senator that had made something of an update. Um, I just wanna clarify a couple of things. You had asked if there's any state participation for, uh, helping people with their costs. And there is, there's mysafeloradahome.gov, which goes active on July first. And that is first come, first served. And it is a, a grant of ten thousand dollars per individual, per home, also applying to condominiums, working with your HOAs. The point of this is that we are going to harden our, our homes and our buildings. Um, we've also secured record funding to address infrastructure needs. Um, we have forty years of deferred maintenance, um, and improperly managed private entities. And we are aggressively taking, um, steps to clean out the bad actors, give you the tools you need to go after them with state-funded participation. The DBPR will be fully funded. It will be finally a force to be reckoned with. Um, and we are going to clean house and we are gonna make costs lower and we are going to be an insurable market once again. With the mysafeloradahome.gov from last year, we've already had several private insurance, uh, agencies coming back to the state. So it is working. It's not an overnight plan. There's no magic wand. We've got a lot of catching up to do. I do wanna address the assessments. That is something that's scaring a lot of people, especially people who might not have the sophistication to understand the writing and it gets scary. Those assessments are not all due now. The assessments are for the life of the intended product. For example, if you have a roof that has another fifteen years of life to it, you have to start, not this, but the following year to start paying into a fund, payments so that by the time that fifteen years is up for that one item, you can replace it. And it goes individually for all the other products that you have to address. So I don't want anyone scaring any of our, our residents. Um, I mainly came here today for your day of solidarity. Um, as you know, I have immediately after October seventh declared District one oh six for Israel. I do not support any propaganda or any sympathizers with any level of terrorism or hate. Um, and I am so grateful to our members of law enforcement who have stood beside me and have kept our community safe. Um, I vow to do everything in my power to give you the resources to keep our community safe. Here at home, we have bigger problems overseas. We will bring our people home. Um, I wanna touch a bit on what I face daily. Um, and I'll stick to this issue for today and I'll come back at a later time to tell you what I face on everything else. But today it's about Israel and, and hate. And I think for the most part, our problems can be solved through education. For those that don't know their history, um, information is out there, but it is difficult to get the right information. For those of you who don't have good instincts just to base your, your gut judgment on the actions of October seventh alone. Um, I, I produced a session gift this year for every member of the House, Senate and the Governor's Cabinet. Sorry for my voice, I lose it every day. It's, um, the book, I, I, it's a book called The Jewish Book of Knowledge. And I thought that if we can properly educate people of all ages and especially our youth, we can really make a stride in eliminating hate in our society. So I brought a book and I don't know the rules. So either it's a gift to the city, to your library, to the mayor, whoever can receive it, however this needs to be written up. It's a beautiful book and I invite anyone to open it and look through it, educate yourselves. It's time that we start doing what's right and standing for what's right and, and coming together as, as the powerful and wonderful and amazing society that we are. So thanks for having me and.
Thank, thank you, Representative. If you give it to the clerk and that, we'll make sure that the library, um, has it for one of the events that they're doing and then we'll keep it forever and ever in the record. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I should also does mention, it was produced by, uh, Alex Markner and our mission. Gotta give a shout out to, uh, Commissioner, um, Ezzy Rappaport in Bay Harbor Islands. He's who introduced me to the book and helped me produce this wonderful gift, which was a bipartisan gift to all the members. So, uh, people are gonna be very informed in their legislative.
Is it available?
Uh, Amazon, anywhere, yeah, The Jewish Book of Knowledge, look it up. I'm not promoting, I'm promoting education, so a- anywhere you can inform yourself, this particular one happens to be beautiful. And sometimes people, you know, they shop with their eyes first and then they open and then they get the content. So I thought it would be an eye catcher. You'll see when you open it. It's a, it's a gorgeous book and please put it front and center somewhere and, and I invite everyone to spend some time with it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Fabian.
All right, next one.
Next item is two D, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit presentation.
Honorable Mayor, oh, excuse me. Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, I am happy to report that we've completed our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, audit. Um, and I want to publicly acknowledge my staff for their assistance in getting that done. Um, especially, um, our Assistant Director Natalie Obando with here in the back and our Senior Accountant Brendan Fapesky. Um, we have also submitted the report to the Government Finance Officers Association for their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Um, and we are hopeful that, um, it'll be our fourteenth year of receiving that award. Um, we have, uh, Alex August? Alex August from Markham, he's our Audit Manager. So he's gonna do a brief presentation and then if you have any questions, you can ask us. Um, you should all have your audit report with you. If you do not.
Yes, we have.
You do?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you Tiffany, um, and it's a pleasure to be here with you today, um, on behalf of Markham. Um, it is a, uh, pleasure to serve this city. And, um, I am gonna highlight a few of the pages in this annual comprehensive financial report. Um, so if you can turn with me, I don't know if you have the printed one or the electronic one, but I, I have the printed one. If you go to printed page, uh, number one, so there'll be printed page one at the bottom. So on that page is our Markham's Independent Auditor's Report. And it says, and I'll just highlight, it says that we've audited these financial statements for the City of Sunny Isles Beach for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And in our opinion, uh, these financial statements, uh, present fairly in all material respects. So what that is, that, that's what's considered a clean opinion and it's the only opinion you want to be associated with. So I would take a moment to congratulate you for that. It takes a lot of hard work. Tiffany mentioned her and her team and her staff, uh, takes an entire team to get this assembled and done, uh, and, and be presented fairly, so congratulations to the city. Next, I will turn your attention to printed page number five. Um, printed page number five starts the management's discussion and analysis are also known as the M D N A. These, these twelve, start, starting at page five, it goes to page sixteen. These twelve pages, I would say if you can't read this entire one hundred and thirty-page document, you should read these pages, these twelve pages. Um, because, uh, it was prepared by your team, uh, Tiffany and her team. And it provides context to what happened this year fiscally for, for the city. Uh, it provides you both quantitative and qualitative analysis. So it's, it's a good way to get a, a, a sense of what happened, uh, fiscally this year. But I will highlight a few things. So if you turn with me to printed page seventeen. Printed page seventeen actually starts the financial statements and, and this is what's commonly, commonly known as the balance sheet and the income statement. Um, and, and for the business type funds, the statement of cash flows. Uh, the first number I'd like to highlight is on printed page nineteen. That first column, the general fund is your, your most important fund. And it states at the bottom here that you have a total fund balance of seventy-seven million dollars and of which fifty-five million of it is, is unassigned, so it is available for future use. That is a very healthy, uh, fund balance position and, and one to be proud of. If I, if you turn with me to printed page twenty-one, that first column, again, the general fund at the bottom shows that the, the fund balance increased during the fiscal year by fifteen million dollars. So, um, just again, context. Uh, the next page I'd like you to turn to is printed page twenty-six. And that begins the notes to the financial statements. The notes supplement the financial statements and, and provides you a lot of meat to these numbers, what they mean, uh, accounting-wise, what it, what it takes, um, uh, so you, you can fully understand each of these numbers. Um, but then to wrap up, uh, I will, I will turn your attention to the back of the financial statement. So all the way to printed page one hundred and thirteen. So in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and it doesn't happen every year, the city was subject to what's known as a single audit. Um, what triggers a single audit is that the city expended over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal awards or federal funding. Um, so that we are required as auditors to, to, um, select major programs and it's a risk-based approach to select the major programs, um, from those federal funds. If you turn to printed page one sixteen, you'll see a list of those federal funds. Uh, we were required to audit, um, both the Equitable Sharing Program, which was one point five million dollars and the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which is four point five million dollars. I am pleased to report that there were no issues or findings in relation to the single audit or the financial statement audit. Um, and so that's something to be very proud of. I wanna give a special thank you to Tiffany and her team, Natalie and Brandon for everything they do. This, uh, an audit is a, is a team effort. Um, it takes much planning and time and corroboration and communication. So, uh, without them, uh, we could not have gotten it done. Uh, this is the second year of our, our audit contract and we're, again, we're ecstatic to be working with the city and, um, it's just a pleasure. So, uh, that, if there are no questions.
Thank you.
Wanna conclude, thank you.
Any questions from the Commission?
Thank you very much.
I just wanna clarify for those that in the audience are watching that are not familiar with this process. We do this annually. This is a requirement. This isn't like an audit, like you get audited by the IRS when you did something wrong. Uh, this is a good thing and, uh, uh, we are, we're very happy to have you here. Thank you. And Tiffany, as always, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item is two, uh, presentation of the college, college scholarship awards. Then make.
So. What is so? We're not the recipient. She just went out, I think, with her mom for a moment, so we can call her. You, you're calling her? Okay, thank you. That is a great, I think she'll be.
Go a week away to her. Just go ahead and we'll, I just wanna make sure, we, is there any audio on the, on your presentation?
No.
Okay, good, cuz it's not working.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. It is with great pleasure that I announce the winners of the twenty twenty-four Sunny Isles Beach Scholarship Award. This year, we are proud to recognize four outstanding stu- high school students, seniors, who have demonstrated exceptional dedication to their education and service to their community. The recipients of the Service Scholarship have shown a remarkable passion for serving our youth here in Sunny Isles Beach, while the winner of the Art Scholarship has displayed exceptional talent as a musician and an artist. Additionally, our recipient for the Athletics Scholarship has shown outstanding dedication and skill in the, in the sport of fencing by competing around the world. As I call each scholarship award winner's name, please come to the front. Scott, for the Service Award, we have Annabelle Ignacio.
Jim.
We also have Zara Rosini.
And.
For the Chief Fred Amos Athletics Accomplishment Scholarship, we have Alex Avanenko.
Yeah. Sixteen thousand dollars now, oh, yeah, and, oh, thank, yes, thank you.
For the Norman, for the Mayor Norman as Edo Cup Excellence in the Arts Scholarship, we have Eliana Ruua. Please join me in congratulating these deserving scholars for their achievement and contributions. We wish them the best in their future endeavors. If we can come down for a picture, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, students. Good luck in college next year. I know you guys are going to very prestigious schools and we wish you all the, the luck. We know you're gonna come back and tell us, uh, all the amazing things that you've done and invented and solved. It's okay. Mauricio, next item, please.
Okay, the last presentation that we have is two G, a proclamation presented for National Safe Forum.
Do you have the proclamation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I have a proclamation here. I'm gonna read it into the record first and then if you wouldn't mind saying a few words. Um, a- as we all know, obviously we are, uh, Sunny Isles Beach, surrounded by water on both sides. Uh, so now more than ever, eh, you know, we, we know that boat safety is, is very important. I know that Commissioner, um, Joe. Uh, so now more than ever, eh, you know, we, we know that boat safety is, is very important. I know that Commissioner Joseph has, has mentioned this in the past as well. Um, so I want to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas for over one million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity. And whereas the city of Sunny Isles Beach is fortunate to have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure boating demands. And whereas our waterways can become crowded at times, causing chaos and confusion. And whereas through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment. Wearing life jackets, attending safety boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks and staying sober when navigating. We can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. And whereas on average, six hundred and fifty people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U S. With approximately seventy percent of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas during National Safe Boating Week, the U S Coast Guard and the National Safe Boating Council, along with federal, state and local safe boating partners. Encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Now therefore, do I allow suspension as mayor on behalf of the city commission, the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida hereby proclaim the week of May twenty first to twenty seventh. Twenty twenty four as National Safe Boating Week in the city of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you. As you said, Sunny Isles is blessed with beautiful weather most of the year. And miles and miles of be- beaches and waterways that people can enjoy safely, hopefully. And National Safe Boating Week is from the National Safe Boating Council, which is sponsored by grants from the United States Coast Guard. And they designate the week of the first week prior to Memorial Day weekend as National Safe Boating Week. The rest of the country, it's usually their kickoff for their boating times. For us, we boat year round. So the Coast Guard and the Coast Guard Auxiliary, which I'm a member of, are dedicated to boating safety twenty four seven, three sixty five. And we are happy to have Sunny Isles join us in getting the message out that life jackets do save lives. And we do appreciate that and thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you. We can come down, take a picture.
I'd also like to say that I'm hopeful that one day we can have a no-wake zone on the waters adjacent to Dump Fowl Me Bed.
I understand exactly what you're saying, sir. Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, it is four thirty three. Did we lose Commissioner Vescar? Okay, um, do we want to keep going? Yes, okay, all right. Now we are on to.
Discussion item.
Okay, thank you.
For a three A discussion regarding the additional speed pumps in the.
All right, this is your item, Commissioner Joseph. Please go ahead.
Um, I've spoken with um Stan and Susan, and we agree that we're going to do a drive around in Golden Shores. As to Atlantic Boulevard and um North Bay Road and one eighty sixth street to see what we can do to um add speed bumps where uh that they've been excluded. Um, we have a North Bay Road uh from one hundred eighty eighth street to on the Atlantic. When you go up one eighty six, uh, it's like a raceway. There's not one speed bump and uh we need to correct that situation.
Okay, three B.
Three B is a discussion regarding the feasibility of installation of fiber off the underground internet points.
Okay, I had actually asked for representatives from AT and T and Breeze Line to be here, but it seems like there is no one here. We, the city is paying a large amount of money for um fiber, but we are not getting full fiber. We're getting fiber uh connected to, uh copper connected to fiber, which will not give us the uh service and the service that we're going to be looking for for years to come. So I believe we need to halt the um installation of this copper. Uh renegotiate. It, it just makes no sense to put obsolete copper, uh that was obsolete uh in two thousand and five. And um install it now when, when we're aiming uh towards the future, when this is just going to be um, just it, it makes no sense. That we're even doing this.
Mr. City Manager, I, like you don't.
Any comment?
Let, let, let me run the meeting.
Mayor, we have a existing contract with AT and T for copper, so any kind of change like that would have to come before the commission. It's my understanding there would also be additional budgetary um implications. As well as, it's my understanding from the company representative that they would want everyone in the community to participate in order to be able to make that change.
So why the representative you mean? When you say the company representative that you're speaking of?
Our past discussions with AT and T.
I see.
Regarding copper versus fiber, but our contract actually calls for copper.
Okay.
Well, that was actually forced on us originally when AT and T itself now does not want to do copper. But because it's cheaper for them to install copper, because it links up with their existing nineteen fifties equipment. Which now they're upgrading to two thousand, the year two thousand equipment, but still leaves uh Golden Shores in the lurch. As far as for future uh connectivity, it just makes no sense whatsoever. And I, as a resident of the Golden Shores, who is knowledgeable of this, has to speak out and say that it makes absolutely no sense. It doesn't serve, serve the residents correctly and it's atrocity if we allow this to happen. As long as we're doing the undergrounding, we have to do it correctly for the future.
If I can just get some clarification, because I'm not understanding what, what the issue is.
And that's why it's happening, because people are not.
No, I don't understand. You, you want us to stop the complete, the, and re- rebid the, the whole thing? I just want to get clarification on what the discussion is.
So originally I was told that AT and T.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Originally I was told that AT and T only wanted to install copper. And that Breeze Line was going to install copper and fiber combined. I was told now, and it, it turns out that there are certain boxes that were installed in Golden Shores. Which I believe uh AT and T designed the project, but is this correct, Susan, I'm, what I'm saying? Because we had this discussion that AT and T designed the project, but the city purchased the equipment. Is that correct?
The city, I'm sorry, the city does pay um for the conversion of existing to existing. So um. Bree, we, we had a meeting specifically with Breeze Line just last week on this exact matter. And they um reiterated what AT and T had said. Oh, and to do something more than like to like, which is what they're contracted for. It would require the whole neighborhood to sign up and it would be a multi-year agreement, not even just for one year.
And when you say the whole neighborhood, you mean every single house has to agree to it?
Yes.
And how would that even happen?
It's the opposite. So that's typically what happens in condos or HOAs, you know, planned communities that have an HOA where they have some control over the utilities. We have no control over the utility pack. So we can't, we can't require anyone. The state requires us to provide SPL power to every home. But not every home even has either Breeze Line or AT and T. So it's a, it's an individual's decision. And so this decision go- is between the customer, which is the homeowner, and the service provider, AT and T or Breeze Line or any.
All right, well, actually that's not the case, because we, the city is paying an amount. And the city is actually working on behalf of the residents. It doesn't come down to a resident saying, oh, I want to have faster internet or slower internet. Or I want to have two hundred channels or I want to have twenty channels. It's a matter of who is watching out for the residents regarding what gets put in the underground. When you had copper on the law, on the, on the poles, okay, which is an old technology. And where the city said, we want to put what's on the poles underground, that was an error. Because they're putting old technology underground. At that point, the city should have said, looking forward, but I, I understand and it's unfortunate that we have situations where people just don't look forward. The same thing like when we built Gateway and we didn't, you know, do enough uh as uh work on the pilings. And we have a similar situation now that I have to speak up and cannot allow it. That it was an error to say we wanted white service and we wanted to put the copper underground. At that point, someone should have said, the future is fiber. And we don't want fiber hat, that we don't want copper at all, especially AT and T who had this nineteen fifties that we've been suffering with.
Okay, so I just, I, I, you know, please go ahead.
So what you're requesting is to renegotiate the contract? Is, is that even possible?
Well, this is what I was getting at. So originally, and this is what I need an answer regarding. The equipment, the boxes that were installed in Golden Shores, did we purchase that equipment to have it installed? As to the plan that AT and T designed?
The boxes are purchased and installed as per the plans approved by both Breeze Line and AT.
Okay.
And I'd like to clarify something.
Yes.
Um, with Breeze Line, they were specific that some homes, so you do see different boxes. And the design includes some homes do have fiber. Those phone, those homes have a business plan, not a resident plan. So I asked the question, so if a customer there wants fiber, can they get? You know, how can they, they would have to sign up for the business plan, not the other plan. So that is a possibility.
Okay, so this is for, this is a decision made by each homeowner, not by the city?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Okay.
And, and we did not say specifically we want copper. There were conversations about having fiber. But there was an added expense on the part of the utilities, AT and T, Breeze Line, back then when it was designed. That they did not want to incur without the commitment of the residents or a long-term commitment.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not supportive of, of renegotiating this contract, so.
Okay, so you live in Golden Shore?
Yes, I do.
Or not for the best service possible.
I am.
As long as you're going through the entire expense, so.
Commissioner Joseph, the, the question is, is that if, if we want to review changing the contract? And I am not supportive of that. Commissioner Stuyvesant, I, what would you like to do?
Whatever the, the staff recommendation.
Okay, so what is this?
So whatever you guys already can do, or if it's anything, if, if anything.
Also, because we don't have a full.
Let, let Commissioner Stuyvesant finish.
We can defer the item, we can.
Yes, let's defer this, this. And maybe we can have AT and T and Breeze Line people here to have a fair discussion at the next commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we're, this, this is a discussion item during the workshop. So if we're having a discussion item.
Next one, during the workshop, I will ask that Breeze Line and AT and T come down to, so that all of the residents can know exactly what they intend for our service.
Okay, so I, I need a recommendation from the city manager, because I don't think this is a good idea for anyone on the commission to be inviting any, any vendors or getting involved in, you, you, yes, through the manager. I think this is the best way to be able to answer those questions, not as individuals. So what is your recommendation, Mr. Manager?
I cannot, um, well, regarding the contract, I cannot force any of the utilities to put in anything specific. And then, you know, I would obviously serve at the direction of the commission. So if the commission as a body directs me to have any particular or asks me to have anybody here, then I would, but it would be at the direction of the commission.
Okay, so right now, do we have enough people to make that decision? And Mr. Sir.
Or so that we don't make any decision.
Well, you're not really supposed to be making decisions.
Yeah, because we're not voting on it either, so.
This is a discussion item, so it's obviously the issue's been brought up. I mean, we are constrained because we have existing contracts. You're foreign to the project. Um, you can't force AT and T or Breeze Line to do anything they don't want to. Nor can you make decisions from behalf of the property owners. So the city manager can reach out to those representatives again, and there's nothing preventing you, Commissioner, from speaking to those individuals as well on your own without them actually coming to the workshop um to see if, you know, they can or you can try to convince them otherwise, but um it, it's, it's, again, there's no voting, so.
Well, considering how far we are in the process and the fact that it is the recommendation of staff that we're not going to be able to do anything. I, I urge you to continue your conversations, but I don't want to waste everyone's time to do some, to the staff time to look into something that we clearly see that we cannot force down the throats of the property owners.
That's not, it's not the property owners. Like I said, it's the city that is making these agreements on.
Can I get clarification from this, from the attorney, please? Let me get clarification from the attorney.
The agreements are, the agreements are not entered into by the staff. They're entering into by the city commission. So the city commission voted for those agreements. It is with the property owners, because if Breeze Line or AT and T do not want to commit resources for fiber without full commitment from the residents, we cannot compel those services on the residents. So at that point, it becomes, as the deputy city manager said, it becomes an, an issue between the property owner and the utility provider. We're providing space for the utility to place their fiber or copper or whatever it is they want to put in there. But we can't compel them to put in fiber, particularly if they don't have the commitment from the homeowners, and in turn, we can't force.
So the homeowners have not been made aware of the situation.
But that's between them and their utility provider.
They didn't, they weren't even made aware to even have a say in whether they want up, you know, up to two thousand twenty four equipment, or they want to have two thousand, the year two thousand equipment.
But that, yeah, that's, that's between them and the utility provider. The city's.
Commissioner, I need to speak up and say this is not right for the community.
Again.
Let me ask, how many millions have we put into this project already regarding the undergrounding and the, and the internet?
For Golden Shores, I don't have that info off the top of my head.
Tiffany, do you have any numbers? Any idea?
This wasn't something that we were planning to, to speak about, so they're, they're not going to be able to have that.
So.
Okay.
Here, here, let's, let's do this. Okay, because we can, we, it's, it's ready almost five o'clock and we need to prepare for our next meeting. So if you want to go back and speak to whomever it is you're speaking to, and they tell you, and they tell you that there's something that they can do that does not require the, the entire, all the homeowners in Golden Shores to buy in.
The problem is you have two companies, so how could that ever be the case, that any one company has?
I, what I'm proposing is that you go back and speak to them, and if they can assure you in writing that they don't need all the homeowners to buy in, then we can continue this discussion.
The only opportunity is through embarrassment. So we have to announce it to the residents. Who is willing to do what for the residents, uh since we're paying a, but excellent price. since we're paying an excellent price for them to do the right thing, which they are not. And I will achieve what we have to within the next month.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item?
Three C is a discussion regarding increased compliance of the waterized scooter ordinance.
Yes. So, okay, so does anyone have an idea how many approximate scooters we have in the city? Right? Still? No, not right, unregistered. That ones, you know, total, I'm thinking maybe fifteen hundred. Does anyone know? No? Okay. Anyway, how many do we have registered currently? Any idea?
Good afternoon. I'm the Davaletco Compliance Manager. As of last week, we had approximately five hundred and five registered scooters.
Any idea what percent that might be of our total scooters? I know it's hard to tell.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Yeah, so I know, just as I look around and I try to be aware, I see a lot of scooters on our roadways and sidewalks that have no decals. So we need to do something to have people take us more seriously. Any suggestions? No?
Beyond what we're already doing?
Yes.
I think that the PD is doing a very good job right now. In fact, they're doing such a good job that I'm getting calls from residents who are complaining to me that they're getting tickets. So I think that they should continue doing what they're doing. What do you propose?
Enough adherence regarding registration. We don't have enough adherence regarding helmets, headwear. I'm surprised that we haven't had more injuries. I'm glad we haven't, but I'm surprised. And we really, I don't feel... That I had videos sent to me, actually, where we had made lines on the sidewalk for pedestrians and scooters and bikes, and that's not being paid the penny for either on North Bay Road, which is causing pedestrians to fear going out to walk. It's something that we can't allow to continue.
Okay, well, Mr. City Manager, if we can have a more detailed report on for our next meeting, I think that would be helpful to give a little bit of context about what we're talking about, because it's a little hard to base the conversation on a video or, you know, likewise, you know, me getting my few complaints, maybe there's more or less. So can we get that for the next meeting?
A report on our scooter enforcement?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I think that will make it a much more robust conversation. Okay. All right, you have a next item, Commissioner Joseph.
Yes, three C is a discussion regarding feasibility of creating a beach walk with four...
Okay. So...
What's yours?
It's just an open conversation. I know that we had had conversations with a company out of Washington State regarding their forest concrete product that they wanted to use Sunny Isles Beach as a test city. And I believe that this would be a perfect product. They've now virtualized their product, and they would be willing to supply it if we were, if we had the interest in a beach walk and it was something that was feasible. So any feelings?
Mr. City Manager, can I get some clarification on this company and what this discussion is?
I'm not familiar with the company in terms of the South Florida application. I... What I would like to do is get an update. I have an updated report from our original consultant on the feasibility of a boardwalk. So I'd like to supply that to you all and have you review it and then give me some feedback.
Okay.
That was the report like twenty years ago, kind of, or a new one, newer one?
Yes, please, Susan.
We have, we just updated that report, DEP, recently. We just got it at the end of March.
Oh, okay.
So it's very recent.
Yeah, we can get that information, because, yeah, I'm always being in favor of if it's doable to do it. It would be an amazing feature for our city. So I'm pretty much in favor of having the boardwalk, but if it's doable. Okay, so if anything you guys can provide, maybe for the next meeting, that'll be...
Mr. City Clerk, is this company registered lobbyist?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, they need to be registered, I'm assuming, in order to have conversations with the commission? Company you're speaking of, what is the name?
Susan and Stan are familiar with them. They're at the fort.
Okay, they need to register, correct?
Yes. It's full.
Okay.
I have nothing to do with them other than...
No, they speak to you, they have to register as lobbyists.
And Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to clear...
Been in touch with, we've watched videos.
Mayor, just to clarify, our report has nothing to do with the company that we're...
No, I understand. I understand. I just, for the sake of the record, in case there's other companies that are looking to have discussions with us, so they know that we're not favoring one over the other, they need to know that they have to register as lobbyists when they have conversations with anyone on the commission.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Next item is yours, Commissioner.
Is it discussion regarding security and attendance at pier parking lot?
Yes. So I've heard several complaints from residents regarding the situation at the pier parking lot, where there were no, you know, the lot basically should be closed, that the spots are all taken, but people are pulling in, double parking, waiting for a spot to open up and making it unsafe for residents to walk in that area. So I don't know what, how we can do, if it's the city's issue or if it's the Newport issue, but I'm just looking to address it so that we have a safer area for pedestrians.
Okay, this is the conversation that we've had many times in the past. If I can just get an update from the city manager about when we had the attendant, why we don't have the attendant, and how much the attendant costs?
The attendant cost us, I believe it was approximately sixty-five thousand, around sixty-five thousand a year. Sixty-five thousand plus. And based on our assessment, the, having the attendant was not... Our cost-benefit analysis was not feasible to have the attendant. So what we have done is we've met with representatives of the Newport to see if there's some increased way we can improve traffic flow. And as always, we have parking enforcement monitoring it.
And I think this might be somewhat corrected once we institute the increased parking fees for those that are coming outside of the city.
Yes, there's an item before you tonight where we've also done an assessment of our parking rates that we're going to present to you.
Okay. Because part of the problem, I think, is that people are coming in and out. So if you're paying more for parking, you may tend to stay longer or maybe park someplace else like Gateway. Okay.
Maybe there's some type of gate that counts the number of spots that, you know, it stays closed when, you know, to not allow other cars to come in? I don't know, there must be some technology out there that, I'll look into it.
You cannot put a gate because that's the entrance for La Perla, for their building, so we can never...
Have a car, don't they have a car also?
No, they use ballot. No, they use ballot. So we need to make sure that we are not going to be also making things for La Perla even more complicated than they are already. I use the parking a lot, actually. Whenever we go eating, to eat in the restaurant, so far I haven't had no issues, personally.
Haven't seen...
I haven't had any issues either, actually. I have not had issues either.
No, no, I'm sorry?
You haven't seen cars doubling for the parking inside the parking area?
No, no, and not, like I said, not personally. And, okay, yeah, and also there is a sidewalk on the south side of that area. So for the pedestrians to go from the collins to the beach, the safe thing to do. Actually, there is a sidewalk on the two sides, in the south and the north. The north will go inside La Perla, so there are options for, to make it more safe, so, yeah.
Okay. Next item?
Next item is three F, the temporary assigned ordinance. I'm going to request it for our little recital, Mayor. We'd like to have this discussion with participation of the full membership of the commission.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so meeting adjourned. We'll see you all at six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.